Ms. Carasola.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Mr. Hayward.
Here.
Ms. Perlamis.
Here.
Ms. Rundell. Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Calvez.
Here.
Dr. Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Corey, if you're able to lead us through the flag salute, please?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting in accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231. Notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record and the Bridgewood News on January 7th, 2025. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the borough clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office in the administration building on the same date. Mr. Cohen, are you able to read the mission statement, please? Sorry, didn't mean to sabotage you, sorry.
The Glen Rock School district founded on principles of education in partnership with a supportive community provides an excellent education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you. Hi Hudson, how's it going?
Hi, good thanks, how are you?
I'm alright. Can you tell us about school?
Yeah, absolutely. Hope you all had a great summer and having a good start to the school year. Very happy to be back once again this school year as this year's student council representative. So, just get right into it, we'll start with sports. Football, soccer, volleyball, cross-country, and girls tennis. I mean, very successful starts their seasons and they're continuing strong into the late stages of the season in the fall. Tomorrow, the club walk-around will be taking place where students will learn about different clubs and throughout our school. There's an opportunity also for the clubs to have some outreach and join and get new members to join, especially from underclassmen. Robotics is hosting a fundraiser in conjunction with Gotham FC Professional Women's Soccer Team, where they'll have a promotion with ticket sales with a portion of the sales going to the robotics team. And that'll be, I think, next week. And then, another updates from September 15th to 19th, we had Spirit Week. Each day of the week with a different theme to dress up, to cultivate that Glen Rock spirit. This culminated on the 19th with the high school pep rally, where school spirit filled the air during various games and activities as well as performances by the cheerleaders and the marching band. That night, the Glen Rock football team played Ponton Lakes in the homecoming game, winning 20-10. And then on the 20th, homecoming weekend came to a close with the homecoming dance right here in the high school cafeteria. Also, Beijing Academy Exchange students are from China are here at Glen Rock High School and they're shadowing Glen Rock students to see what life is like as an American high schooler and participating in educational experiences throughout all the departments of Glen Rock. Additionally, the peer-to-peer mentor program is back up and running with upperclassmen serving as mentors the sixth graders in transitioning into middle school. And this year, it's being held in conjunction with the sixth grade advisory. And in general, students at Glen Rock High School right now are, it's high energy and definitely we're feeling a strong start to the school year. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, so welcome back to the school year. Really thrilled to see you again and excited to continue to hear your reports throughout the year.
Thank you.
Alright, so on to our public hearing for the refunding school bonds.
The motion.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing? Ms. Perlamis, seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Alright. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Carasola.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Yes.
Ms. Perlamis.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Calvez.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, so as we had updated the board at our last meeting, the district has an opportunity to refinance some of its debt service because we can achieve a lower rate in the outer years of those bonds, which are within the next eight years. So, key points here, you know, the district is obligated to refinance any time it can save more than 3% net present value on its bonds. All the costs associated with the refinance are also included in that 3% NPV, so that it's all in. The bonds that we're going to be refinancing are our 2016 series refunding bonds that refinanced our 2008 referendum. That was done back in 2016 and the district saved 4.1... $4.1 million on that refinance. We estimate, based upon current market trends, that we'll save an additional $1.3 million on this second refinancing. There will be no increase in term on these bonds, they will still mature in 2034. And the reason that we're refinancing and that we can save some money is that we are now, with eight years left, we're in the short-term rate market, which is showing some signs of easement on the rates and so we're going to try to capitalize on that opportunity and save some money in our debt service. And if we go out to auction with our bonds and we do not save the 3% because for whatever reason there's some major catastrophe the morning of the auction, where the only fees that we are on the hook for are that of the rating agencies, S&amp;P, which we'll meet with, who will rate our bonds based upon our financials. And that is pretty much... Oh, timeline, we can talk about timeline. So, here we are in October, we have prepared the issuance documents. We'll begin to work on our rating agency presentation. All of that assumes that we pass the ordinance this evening. November, the rating will be issued, our final issuance documents will be completed and filed, and we'll have our bond sale on November 19th. We anticipate that the transaction will close on December 9th. And the bonds will be, the bonds that are being refinanced will be redeemed in March 1st of '26. The reason why there's that, we have to be within 90 days on the refinancing, otherwise the underlying bonds will not be tax exempt for the investor. So, that was a key, critical point in our calculations. And that is really, in a nutshell, our refinancing. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. What are the typical agency fees? So, it doesn't sound like we'll have an issue, but if you can't, like, what are your typical fees that we'd be seeing?
Deminimus. Deminimus.
Okay.
Could I just, so this is the third meeting that we've been discussing this. Each meeting in more and more detail has been on the budget. So, thanks for running this. It's mandated by the state, I know, so it's, every once in a while, we do a good thing that's mandated. So, I'm happy that you're leading this, happy that you're describing all the details that we're exposed to, the fees. Whether those fees happen or not, we're required to do this. And the net product here is, we're saving more than 3%. I think you said it's about 7.5% on the total expense of this 20-plus million dollar amount.
That's absolutely correct, that's what the pro forma was based on. So, a lot could happen and I still save 3%.
Right, so this is just, this is a good thing and thanks for presenting it clearly because numbers are easy to obscure in this business. So, you summed it up well.
Alright. Alright. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Canelis. So... Alright, so at 7:28, I would like to open our first of three public comments today. So, the first public comments is only on the public hearing, the school bonds, so this is the time for you to be able to make a statement, if you'd like to, about the bond hearing. You have three minutes and please state your name and address. Alright, seeing no members of the public for the bond hearing, we can close at 7:28. And then I need a motion to close the public hearing? Alright, Ms. Calvez, seconded by Ms. Carasola. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Alright, can I have a motion to discuss B1? Huh? What the...
You gotta move it first.
B1, yeah, there's the moving. Yes, so can I have a motion to discuss B1? Alright, Mr. Hayward, seconded by Ms. Calvez. And then this is the discussion. Any items for...
For P?
Yeah, for the B1. For B1.
Just P1?
B1.
B1.
Oh, B1, okay.
Just B1, related to the bonds. Yes, so this is just the formal resolution, yeah. Yeah, this is the resolution to approve it, alright. So, seeing no additional, you know, discussion comments, I know we've been discussing this over several meetings. We are able to call roll?
Ms. Carasola.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Yes.
Ms. Perlamis.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Calvez.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, so this is for public comments, agenda items only. This is the second of three public comment sessions. Please state your name and your address and you have three minutes and this is for agenda items only.
Colleen Manley, 7D Ridge Road. Thank you to you all for the work that you do. I am, as I emailed you earlier today, I am commenting on P23, which is just the standard approval of the stipends for the winter sports. And as I have done in the past, I would just like to comment on how I believe there is an equity in the contractual tiering of the sports. As I shared with you in research that I have done, the tiers for what we pay our coaches were created in the contract of 1991 and 1992. And since then, nothing of the original tiering has really ever been changed, some sports have been added, there's some little tweaking at the bottom. And I think that's unfair. I think that there is no documentation or criteria that reflects, okay, here's why these sports are at the top, you know, there's five tiers of stipend levels. And I am closest to the track programs, which are the largest programs in the school and which, cross-country and winter track, receive two of the lowest stipends available. Again, I understand this is contractual. I provided with you a bunch of data just based on team size. You know, I'm dealing with public information, so I don't have a lot of what perhaps Mr. Vialante has or whatever. I think if you were to reevaluate this, it would be based on like a big effort, right? Like, you need to have, you know, what are their criteria? How does that determine which sports, which coaches get the highest levels, which get the lowest? But right now, just as an example, for girls' winter track and boys' winter track, they each have about 35 kids, it's a team of 70. The team, as everyone knows, is run as a whole. Each head winter track coach is paid the same as the bowling coach, who coaches 13 people. I don't think numbers are exactly it, I'm just making a point. That winter track is probably, you could call it like 20 events. It's frost, JV, and varsity. It's male and female. It's track events and field events. It's this huge thing. Meets are like nine hours long. And that's being paid the same as bowling, and I hate to pick on bowling, because every single opportunity for every single kid is important. I am not saying anything negative about that. So, I just want to make this point again, I understand it's contractual and I think you can read my letter for more, but I just hope that you somehow get it on a path to start addressing this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manley.
My name is Sandy Yuzon, 217 Gainer Place, mother of Hayden, class of 2023, and Evan, class of 2027. Thankfully, Colleen Manley has extensively outlined the numbers and facts showing the disparity of coaches' stipends across all sports. She has already sent a detailed email to many of you. The tiering system used is from the 90s, it needs to be adjusted to reflect the modern day. There needs to be an understanding of what goes into each tier, what's the criteria? Is it based on the size of the team? Last year, the boys' winter track team had 32 athletes versus 20 in hockey and 20 in wrestling, yet those coaches made 3,000 more than track. How is that equitable? Safety should be also considered with this size. The winter track team competes in Washington Heights, New York City. We need as many coaches as possible, not only to cover all the events, but to watch the kids, their safety is paramount. Are the tiers based on accolades? The boys' winter track team won the NJIC Colonial Division, Bergen County Relays, and are reigning state check notes, Group One champions. That should have been honored after the season, rather than the end of the school year, as it was done by the sport of education last year. Or maybe the tier should be based on the student feedback. I'm sure that there are many athletes that would love to weigh in on the performance of their coaches. In a time when mental health and wellness are needed, we need coaches, we need to retain coaches that support our kids on and off the field. We need coaches like Weinberg and Gallo, who are loved by their athletes. Hayden is currently a junior and competing as a sprinter at Bates College in Maine, not baseball, not football, but track. He's thankful for all the support and friendships he's made at the Glen Rock track teams. Evan is a junior, a strong competitor for the shot put. He was number one sophomore in New Jersey, as a freshman, he won the league, as a sophomore, he won the county. He has a solid chance to bring state recognition to the school, and yet, here we are, trying to get him the support he needs to excel, to get the support he and his team need to improve and thrive, to keep his coaches. This past summer, I was diagnosed with breast cancer, tomorrow is my last day of radiation. Instead of relaxing at home, thankful for my treatments to finally end, I am here again, a year later, discussing the same inequalities for the track team, trying to change your minds on the bias that surround a great sport. No, it's not as flashy as football or basketball, but it is a sport that can get you to play at the collegiate level. Please consider looking into these tiers and disparities. Glen Rock needs to retain good coaches and great athletes. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, congratulations on this big event for you. Thank you.
Lori Donnelly, 7 Waldrin Avenue. I too am here yet again, a year later, to discuss the same issue. Winter track, the inequity in the tier system, all of the points that Ms. Manley and Ms. Yuzon pointed out to you, not only in the letter, but in our verbal... Our ability to verbally speak to you tonight. Again, I'm disappointed that we're sitting here having this conversation. What does it say to those 60-plus students? Oh, and by the way, the spring track team, I think, is over 100 students. And I happen to notice, not sure why, but there's no lines on the track right now. But, what does that say to the students? We're back here, fighting for equity for their coaches, for people who care about them, for people who put their safety, their well-being, their enjoyment of a sport, of an extracurricular activity, of the camaraderie, of just the ability to participate in this district, in something that you offer. But it... But it doesn't seem to be offered at the same level or at the same, with the same care and consideration as some of the other sports, for some of the other coaches. I hope, again, you will hear our... Our information that we've provided, you will hear our voices, and you will hear the voices of the students. And again, I hope you will consider taking a look at these tiers. As Ms. Manley pointed out, they are decades old and nobody has really ever approached why they exist the way they exist. Has anybody even taken a look at it? I appreciate that Ms. Manley did the research to look at that, because I didn't even know that. I wonder if any of you did. I wonder if any of you took the time to hear what we said, to hear what was written, to hear what the students said last year? Or if we just simply, oh, the easy way out, let's just keep increasing it by a certain percentage straight across the board? So, I hope going forward, some of you will put some more effort into really taking a look at the tier system and at the inequity that does go on in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I am Jeon Kim, my address is 222 Glen Avenue. I'm here to speak out because we need to have our winter track coaches, Coach Gallo and Weinberg properly recognized. Nowadays, Glen Rock has become a popular town with good schools and a great environment for raising children, attracting people from other areas who want to move here. Why do you think that is? Is because of small group school community, where students who excel academically or in sports are not the only ones recognized? In this family-like atmosphere, even students who are not strong in sports have the opportunity to participate and receive encouragement. This is especially true in cross-country and winter track, led by our Coach Gallo and Weinberg. The school is not just a place for academic, sports, and other activities, but also a place where students learn leadership and social skills as members of the community. Our current coaches encourage and guide all cross-country and winter track team members without giving up on anyone, helping students improve in sports, academic, and friendship, enabling them to have a successful school life. Coach Gallo and Weinberg are dedicated coaches who make this possible. As the mother of my junior daughter Caroline Yun, we feel these coaches are essential and we hope they continue coaching while having their ability to be properly recognized. We kindly ask you all to reconsider and make a valuable decision in this matter. Thanks for taking your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to make a comment? And this is just for agenda items only. And I will also mention that there is a walk-in motion for a G20 item that will be a resignation. And so, of a board member, so I do want to give the opportunity to have people comment if that is something. Okay. Alright, so seeing no additional members of the public to make a comment, we can make, we can close our public comments session number two at 7:43. Two things, so traditionally, I will say that we don't respond to public comments in the moment here for a variety of reasons, even something that the State Association really also recommends. So, usually I have people send an email in and, you know, like, we receive the email, we get information, and we reply that way. And I'm going to move towards like a slightly different format where if I'm able to answer some questions right in the moment because of things that I know, then I will. If I'm not, then I'll, you know, ask you to send an email to the board and we'll respond back, or if the administration needs more time, then we'll do so. And oftentimes, in the moment, you know, we're not able to give you the information that you need in order to have a full, well-thought-out response. But in this situation, you know, a few of the members of the public here showed up today to ask about the coach stipends, and I can say that wholeheartedly, we've already had discussions, you know, with regards to negotiations and collective bargaining agreements where, you know, optimally, we would like to see a better system of figuring out how the stipends come. But that does take a lot of time and a lot of research, some of which, like, Ms. Manley has produced. But that is also part of a collective bargaining agreement. So that means both the administration and us, the Board of Education, sits down with the teachers' administration and then mutually decides upon what things and what priorities and what things that we're going to move towards fixing. And this collective bargaining agreement that we have not, just recently, within the past two years, done for the Teachers Association, included a number of items, right? So, I think that going forward, you know, looking at not only for the coaches, I think the other thing that we identified is that extracurriculars and club sports and things like that also need to be recognized, and some clubs take up more time than others, some have more students than others and have other types of field trips and things like that that make them more difficult to manage. And so that is something that we'd like to take on, but it will take time and it is part of the collective bargaining agreement. And so, you know, we really try not to open up, you know, contracts that tends to be, you know, a concerning thing to be able to do that, so we're trying not to open up contracts and things like that to renegotiate with that. But going forward, it absolutely is something that we are interested in making sure that there's equity across the table. And Mr. Canelis, with regards to the lines.
Sure, I just wanted to address the comment on lining of the track. The track is not lined because we wanted to get the playing facility open to as many students as possible as quickly as possible. And so we could not get in the lining company, which is different from the company that lays the actual track, to come in in time for the various fall seasons and to give the students some time to practice on those fields. We are all set and prepared and ready to paint the lines as soon as the fall season ends.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to discuss G1 through, instead of G19, it's actually G20? I'll also read, let me read G20 before we, before I accept a motion. Be it resolved that the board accepts the resignation of Board Trustee Sinead Rundell effective November 1st, 2025. Can I have a motion to discuss B1 through, I'm sorry, G1 through G20? Mr. Corey, and then seconded by Ms. Perlamis. Alright? Any, yes, Mr. Cohen?
So, I don't feel I have enough information to make a decision on G9, so I'm going to abstain. And in regards of G20, the resignation, it's disappointing to hear that somebody resigns a month in... a, a month in advance to prevent the board from, uh, putting a replacement in her place. So, um, just voicing my disappointment from, uh, that, um, delayed resignation.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a few comments. One, I also echo that it's a little strange to put a resignation in, not effective immediately, um, and that it's dated so far out to November 1st. I find that unfortunate. Um, regarding the contents of, uh, the Gs that we're talking about, um, for number 16, uh, for the policies that we're talking about, the statutory curricular requirements, P2422, this is a policy that we're reviewing and, and making sure we want to keep it as is or update it, and this regards essentially sexting and, and educating kids about the dangers of this. However, our policy only accommodates one lesson in this, in middle school, and I really would advocate that this also carries over to high school. I don't think middle schoolers can really grasp the concept of this, but it bears repeating, for sure, in high school. So I don't know why we're, um, I, I would move that the board, um, revise this to include also high school. Um, and then, I'm sorry, I might have one more comment. Um, I just also want to point out that we're, we are approving, um, all these beautiful new clubs, and I was really happy to see them. We have, I, I mean, it's great, there's, there's so many different clubs being, being brought in, um, and people can read them in the, the notes, but I, I just commend the school for adding these clubs, and I commend the people who are leading them. A lot of them are volunteers, and I thank them, because this is, um, you know, this is, this is great stuff that you're doing for the school.
Thank you. Um, so, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll have everyone else, um, you know, share any comments on the G items as well, and then we can discuss, um, with regards to P2422, what it is that you're, um, asking.
Just in regards to G9, I had similar questions, but I understand that it's just going to be a new practice going forward, it's just something we didn't see before, so, uh, we just get more information on what, or kind of the foundation of that, so we can better understand what it is and, um, what we'll be seeing in the future.
Approving special settlement.
Yeah, we didn't have those on the agenda before, so just a little context around what we're seeing and why, maybe?
Yeah, sure, I can speak to what you've done in the past, but anytime there's a settlement agreement, this is obviously a confidential student matter, but anytime there's a, a settlement agreement, it should be approved by the Board of Education. Some boards authorize their directors to sign on behalf of the board. I think it's good practice for the board to, to approve them as well through a formal resolution. And oftentimes, the administrative law judges who hear these cases do want to see an actual resolution by the Board of Education, approving them as well. So, again, I can't speak to what's happened in the past, but, uh, it's good practice for the board to vote on them.
Yeah, sorry.
I, I just don't understand how you expect it to approve something that we haven't seen or don't know, or didn't get enough information, so I just don't understand how the board can vote.
Yeah, again, we're constrained, obviously, what we can say publicly. If the board doesn't feel that they have enough information to vote, uh, we can certainly get more information to you in the form of an executive summary of what the case is about and why we're settling it, if it could wait till the next meeting, possibly. Is there any rush to do this tonight, do we think, or?
I'm not exactly, I'm not familiar with the case, I don't know when this student is, uh, starting, um, the placement.
Yeah, so again, I don't know if this is time-sensitive or not, but I, remind me, when is our next board meeting?
Uh, October 15th.
So we have another meeting in a couple weeks.
In two weeks.
Look, if, if the majority of the board doesn't feel that they're comfortable voting on it, then we should table it and get more information and put it on another agenda.
All right. Yes?
Despite the fact, we really can't discuss any of the details, I think this is a good step towards transparency of actions that the board does have to take. So, uh, be in support of taking action on this at our next earliest opportunity, which looks to be...
October 15th.
Yeah. So, um, but really, I want to reaffirm that this is, things that the public wouldn't even see that the, that the school district does, so I think this is a step in the right direction, and I'm glad we're working out the kinks so quickly.
Yeah. I'll say that, um, you know, uh, we don't necessarily have to put anyone individually on the spot. If, if it's necessary in order for a student not, when I say not to be harmed in this situation, by us not voting on this item, that I'm pretty sure that we'd be able to, um, you know, put together a quorum, uh, that would be necessary in order to pass the, the resolution, um, with more information, if that sounds...
So can we just ask the administration to administratively withdraw this, withdraw this item from the agenda tonight and just put it on our next agenda? Is that okay?
Yep. And, and please, please do let me know if there's a, a time-sensitive nature to it, and we'll be able to, um, remedy that. All right?
It's just administrative.
Administrative, yeah, administratively withdrawn.
Yeah. All right. Um, any other comments regarding G items?
Just, I was also going to say how much I love all the new clubs that the students are bringing to our attention, and the staff that's, uh, helping them, get them started. I think it's fantastic, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about the walk-around that's happening next week.
All right. Thank you.
Kind of a broader statement, like, the clubs kind of speak to the whole student, and I've, in this past year, I've had a lot of small conversations with people in the community that talk about college prep and other opportunities for career development. So seeing that, that we have opportunities for kids to engage through clubs, just really kind of brightens my eyes, and, um, there, there's a lot of career opportunities where people can be highly successful without a full year or master's degree, and opportunities like this are fundamental. The school district no longer, no longer has woodshop or metal shop. Just getting a chance to see, see something non-academic, uh, in their day is, uh, part of what we do, so I'm glad to see that, for those reasons.
Thank you. I share your sentiments. Seeing no other comments, I'll, I'll just, you know, make a comment on, on item G20, and I echo here what Christine and Boas, um, have to say. I, I would rather see a resignation effective immediately, to be honest, so. But seeing that I don't have that option, um, then that is what it is. If there are no other comments, uh, then I will go to roll call.
Uh, we, you have an outstanding motion to revise P2422.
I don't think we, we have a, we have a mover, but we do not have a second.
Christine, did you want to make a motion to amend it to include the high school?
I will make a motion. I would like to revise policy 2422, so that the, um, lesson and instruction in the sexually explicit images through electronic means, um, is taught not only in middle school, but in high school.
All right.
The, the board would vote on the amendment first, and if it passes, the motion as amended. So this is just voting on the amendment.
Yes.
It was moved seconded.
Uh, Boas second, uh, Cohen, Mr. Cohen.
Discussion.
Yep, all right, so, um, discussion for this amendment to include, uh, high school? You had something?
I'd love to hear from administration if they agree with the idea, or if it creates a burden on teachers, or anyone with this type of instruction. I'm not against it in any way, but, um, school opinion.
So, while we are here, I was quickly skimming through the ninth grade and 11th grade health curriculum, and I don't see it in there, but it's not too far from the kind of conversations they're having there. So I would need to look into it further to see what, what is actually being discussed in those classes, but we could certainly, I think, fit it in.
All right. I, it, it, like, uh, Mr. Van Ness said, it doesn't really sound like it's something that's far off, uh, or hard to accomplish covering. So, I think if we're okay, we can do a roll call? All right?
Ms. Carisola?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes to amend P2422.
Thank you. And then, if there are no other, uh, questions or comments on, uh, G items, if we're able to call a roll.
Ms. Carisola?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, except G20, no.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to discuss, uh, B2 through B10, please? Mr. Corey, seconded by Mr. Hayward. Any questions or comments regarding our B, uh, B items? All right. And thank you for the information with regards to, um, the changing of the, like, understanding why we're changing the RTUs and things like that, so I did appreciate that, and I know it was probably something simple, but, um, thank you. All right. Seeing no additional questions or comments, can I get roll call for B items?
Ms. Carisola?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Can I have a motion to discuss our P items, please? Ms. Calvez, seconded by, uh, Ms. Parlamis. Any questions or comments regarding our P items?
I.
I have a, I do have, actually, so, and, and if you're unable to answer this question, then just please let me know. With regards to the, um, math basic skills intervention sessions, I see the flyer that, um, Dr. Charleston attached. Um, are you able to tell me just really a little bit more about how, about the program, how it originated, what your goal is with it?
So, I don't have more, many more details than what you have in front of you in that, but what I do know is that, um, at the beginning of the summer, or late spring, I'm not sure which it was, um, we were looking specifically at, um, that sixth grade math and, and language arts and, and those areas, and trying to target, how do we really look at those things? And so, Dr. Charleston tasked supervisors in the principals of the middles, middle and high school to come up with some plans to address some of these, these areas, and this is the plan that they developed.
Okay. All right, thanks. I think, I, I will, I will ask, um, maybe even for the next meeting, if we're able to discuss kind of, like, what was born out of the, the, their findings over the summer, and like, a little bit more about the program. So I'll, I'll send a, a message, but just to, to give you a heads-up. And there was one other thing that had popped up. So, I know, like, I know this is, again, this is something, uh, last minute, because this member of the public just sent an email, like, a few hours ago. Um, but with regards to P31, again, if you know the answer, then great, if you don't, then, um, we will come back. Um, with regards to P31, with the Paramus Literacy Coaching Course, um, are you able to, uh, tell us a little bit about that program, or, um, is this like, will the, will the teachers attending this workshop get professional development, or, or anything, like, if you, do you know anything about that program?
So, I know it is a professional development workshop, and that will count towards their PD hours and such. I don't know the content of what they're going there for that day, um, I don't have that in front of me.
You don't know? Okay, all right. So, we'll find out more.
Would we be able to find out about the, the curriculum for that instruction course? Specifically, the member that, uh, emailed us, the community member that emailed us in requiring, which is a very good question, which, does the literacy course align with the New Jersey literacy framework? Would, would we be able to have follow-up on that, if it does?
I can follow, I can follow up on that, yeah.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm going to be abstaining on P31, as it, um, where it applies to me. I'm on there to attend the NJ SBA Delegate Assembly.
Same goes for me.
Yeah, every, every board member should just be deemed to abstain on their own, um, approval.
Correct.
Make it simple.
All right. Um, seeing, oh, yes, sorry, go for it.
So, P20 calls out the new clubs, and it's great to see all the new clubs, but especially, um, my brother is deaf, and he's very passionate about the sign language, so, uh, it's great to see the new sign language club. And, uh, secondly, um, given, I, I know it's a contractual, and I know we have an agreement, but given the inequitable, uh, numbers and the concerns from the public, I am going to vote no for P23.
Um, can I also speak to the P23 as well?
You can, yes.
Okay. Um, I would like to thank the public for all the information they provided, it was extremely helpful. Um, I, I didn't have much time to take a look at it, but I, I did kind of do a quick analysis, and if you just kind of grouped those sports into male sports, female sports, and neutral gender sports, you do see, um, the male sports stipends are 30% higher than both the female sports and the gender-neutral sports. So, it's statistically significant. Um, I would like, you know, if we could, as a board, commit to having maybe a presentation from the athletic director, and calling for a review of how the decisions are made on the stipends, and what the, you know, just so we can understand it more, the community can understand it more. I know it's all contractually based, um, but it would be helpful to have more context.
Yeah. Um, I, I, I certainly think that that would be something that we're able to, to ask, or like, even create a committee, or, um, because, again, like I said, this somewhat, like, cursory came up during our, um, negotiations, you know, discussions, there are certain things that I really can't say, because just the nature of the legal aspect of the negotiations discussions. Um, but, I, I don't have any, I certainly will not object to having, like, some sort of committee that starts the process of, of looking at creating a matrix, like, what we were talking about was creating a matrix that allows you to really see, based on either the enrollment, or the amount of hours that, that it takes. Certain, certain clubs take more hours than others, some are more intensive, some have, there are all kinds of things, whether it's sports, or, um, extracurriculars and things like that that go into it. And so what we were, you know, hoping was that we were going to be able to get to a point where we could create a matrix, because we, we found one from, I think it was like Wes Windsor, or something like that, that we found one, um, from another school district that they published it, and you, we just couldn't see, because it would be like A column, D column, and then if you had A plus C, then that, you got this amount of money. And, um, we liked it, but it was actually, it's, it's very labor-intensive to be able to find that information out, and, um, considering all of the other things that we were working on with regards to the negotiation, um, you know, uh, I won't even go into it, but it was, it was, it was too much to, too many changes to make at one time. So I think that, oh, looking at that as a separate thing, um, would be great. Why I would also then, you know, caution against voting for these things, when we vote no for certain items, it means that they, they can't happen, so that means no one's getting any stipends.
Right.
Until we resolve it. So, if, I, I, I know, I know that that, the vote has, you know, been suggested to be made here, but that means nobody gets money until whatever date in the future that this is resolved. So, that is what you're asking for with a no vote.
I understand that, but what I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to say, no, I am trying to say that we should commit, as a board, to having a presentation, and this, if we can get a sub, um, committee together to look at this, and make a committed effort with set goals and timeline to do this.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I agree. Yes?
Transparency, again, if, if the only publicly available data is 30 years old, there's been discussions in the meantime, and it'd be a great way to just help people who are so vested in these programs understand how this is continued and operated. Um, you, you took the words out of my mouth. A no vote on this means the entire list of dedicated coaches who are counting on this opportunity to foster development in our kids would be unfunded, so absolutely, I'm in support of this. Um, kind of the, the other unspoken thing, um, about the athletics program here, and I want to thank the member of the community who, who commented on the state of the track. I ran on the sender track here, the coaching staff allowed me to continue that motivation into college, and this is a world-class facility for, for our kids to be able to compete and find out who they are. to be able to compete and find out who they are. So the costs of the facilities out there far outstrip the, the measly dollars that we pay for our coaching staff, but it's all part of the calculus that we as a board have to, to manage. So I'm extremely proud that we have brand-new facility lined or unlined. It will be lined by the, by spring. And I just, I'm highlighting that because that's part of the hard decision that we need to make and balance today. So I'm very in support of reaffirming all these coaches right now and Boaz. So I think it's good context to understand that this is part of the larger decision that we're in support of too. So thanks for the time.
Just to clarify, my no vote is not against any other coach or any other step, and it's just, it's not a just, but it's symbolic vote, given the inequity and the concerns from the public. And just, I was looking at the list of the expenses for NJ SBA, and my name is not there, so.
I believe Mr. Boaz, you, Mr. Cohen, you were approved at a previous meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I accept, and I, I thank you as well for, you know, stating your, your symbolic vote there. Because I think that, I think that what the community would find is that we're all supportive of, of the equity in, in salary. And so while a quorum of us couldn't vote symbolically, otherwise the motion wouldn't pass, I do understand that, what you're saying. So, all right. If there are no other items for P, then we can...
Can we just double check on the number of abstentions we will have on P thirty-one? Because that motion requires five votes. And if not, we are going to have to
Pull it, yeah.
enact the doctrine of necessity?
I think it's only we're abstaining to our own name.
Well, on that item.
But it's a, it's a whole item as it is.
It's a whole item. No, it's a whole item, so.
No, 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 the board members can abstain just on their name. So in other words, by abstaining, they're not abstaining on the whole list, they're just abstaining on themselves.
Right, but then, then that motion of their travel won't pass.
Unless we have five people who support it, right?
Unless we have five people voting. Unless we enact the doctrine of necessity, which would allow us to do that. Because we have conflicted board members.
I love the doctrine of necessity anyway, so.
But I, I can't imagine that we wouldn't have the necessary five votes if it's just one person. Correct me if I'm wrong, abstaining just on themselves.
I don't know. I heard four abstentions.
But he's only...
That's why he asks for clarification. So who is abstaining?
Who's abstaining?
I was going to abstain on, to go to the delegate assembly.
Just on yourself.
On myself, and that, and there's no cost to that.
Correct.
I'm abstaining to go to the conference.
Ju- just on herself.
Just on myself.
That's one, two. So then we should...
So we have the votes, yeah.
Then we could, okay.
All right. All right, so we are good to call roll.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, accept the P twenty-three, no.
Mr. Corey?
Yes, on all.
Thank you. Mr. Hayward?
Yes, accept as noted.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, accept as noted.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes, accept as noted.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, so then you'll see our vandalism suspension here reports as usual. So there are just a few things, like, so, members of the board asked for a variety of things to be placed onto either old or new business. So for old business, you want to talk about your ask, Dan, for budget?
Yeah, regarding the...
Committee?
So we're at the beginning of budget season, I believe, once again. And at, at the beginning, I know since we have now a newly formed budget committee from last year, it'd be great to kick off and have a, a budget calendar. Is that, that's the one we were talking about, right?
Yeah, that's what you're asking for.
Just to, to review of last, of last year's budget performance year-to-date, and then also just establish a...
So just you, you're asking to be looked at?
Just, just meeting, yeah.
Yeah, just...
And I'm explaining the rationale for the meeting, sorry, with many words. Just to have this, have an upcoming meeting of the budget committee.
Okay.
As we're kicking off the schedule, it's probably a thirty-minute ask plus a little review of how to, how to process where we are year-to-date.
Okay. I guess, go ahead.
I believe we established those ad hoc committees by resolution, so I think we would need a resolution to reestablish the budget committee. I think, I don't think they were standing.
So if, if, I mean, we did it this year, this calendar, so you're saying that...
It was for la, it was for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year, and those are not standing committees. We operate as a committee of the whole? So what I would just say is, is you just need a motion to...
So then how do we, how would we, because I, I did it at the reorg meeting.
You did it at the re...
I, I could check the policy real quick, if you have two seconds. Some, some board policies require it be by motion, others simply say the board president could do it on her own. So let me, I'll check the policy, I'll sort of go back, yeah.
But there's no, no argument to having it.
Yeah, sure. I just want to make sure we're following procedure.
Yeah, thanks for the question or clarification on how to figure this out, so.
Perfect, thanks. All right. And then, so with regards to artificial intelligence in our schools, I know that we were discussing, I know that we were discussing, we were discussing with regards to our district goals and everything like that, what artificial intelligence and how we use it and how we're pushing ahead. And one of my goals was not so much just, you know, you know, just only to make sure that the, the teachers have the appropriate, you know, PD, to make sure that they are comfortable, you know, teaching it, using it, instructing students on how to ethically use it, all of those things. But looking at how we can push forward as a district, like, if I'm looking at other school districts that are, you know, really heavily leaning in, like, I know, I know you had work for Burton County, you know, you're able to see some of the really cool things that they're able to do there. I, I'm looking, I'm really asking for us to like lean in heavily on, on making sure that our students are prepared, you know, extremely well. And so I know Dr. Charleston had replied back and said that, he said a few things. One, that, that it's, it's already being implemented in the schools. I understand that part of the reason why I brought this up is because many parents, especially parents of high school age children, have come to me and asked me about what we're doing with this. Not just one, not just two, maybe like at least five to six parents of, of kids, either whether they're involved in IT themselves or have questions about IT and AI and understanding and being prepared for today's workforce and even tomorrow's workforce. So, you know, one of the things that, it doesn't necessarily have to be implemented into goals, but I, I would like to find a way for us to consider, you know, dealing with GREA and identifying what, like a committee of like how we can move forward. One of the things that Dr. Charleston mentioned in that email reply was that the GREA had, had asked for less AI as of, I think, twenty-three, twenty-four or the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And being that that, you know, like, it's like two years now, I think that it would be a great opportunity for us to revisit that and then see if, if their needs are still met, or if we're able to have any areas of opportunity for our children there. What are your thoughts or anything, if you're even able to share what it's like at Burton County or anything? Yeah.
Um, we do, well, we've got big operation, right? We're many schools, so, you know, I don't want to get into too much detail. But we've got, you know, at the, the higher end, we've got classes that actually talk about large language models, the development and how to design them. On a, we'll call it tech department end, we, we work on training people in utilizing AI tools such as Notebook LM or Chat GPT, of course, and curricular tools. We have a standing committee that gets together once a month in Bergen Tech and Bergen County Special Services, separate committees, different focuses, that talks about how it can be utilized in curriculum, how it can be utilized for teachers. I know all of our curriculum and lesson planning tools all have AI built into them now. So that's made lesson planning so much easier for teachers, which is fantastic, because that's probably a big, bit of labor for them. And yeah, there's a lot of wonderful things out there. It's such a broad topic, though. You gotta be, you know, it's very, very difficult to pinpoint like where to start. So we really started with experimenting. And, you know, you gotta go into it with sort of an open mind. And we started with a couple of teachers, we expanded to different groups. Now we're looking at secretaries, how it helps them. And so it's growing, but bit by bit.
All right. All right, so I guess, you know, maybe that'll be further discussion at our Cal meeting to see what it is that, you know, we could be asking and where we could start. So thank you. Go ahead.
So, so in terms of the committees, the policy, it's O one, five, five, and it says it could be done actually either way, established by the board president or a vote of the Board of Education?
Um, yeah, we can establish the ad hoc committee because we're not changing our, our structure of the board in like instant. Well, what do you mean? Like in terms of the who? Yeah, the, the who's and all, all of that is going to stay the same. Yes. And this would be then through the calendar year then? Is that, is this good enough for the budget year? Thank you. Understood. All right. So I, I actually also have another old business item. So at our last meeting, we reviewed policy zero, one, seven, four, and ultimately decided to table it for further consideration, which, you know, will still happen. And I just wanted like preface it for your understanding for our next meeting, for our Cal meeting, for our discussion, our full discussion. And so I have taken additional time to review both the policy and the recommendations from Strauss Esme. After careful thought, I'm in favor of adopting those recommendations. That said, I do not support making changes to our current procedure regarding how and by whom the board attorney may be contacted. At our last discussion, there was a request that I send more frequent email updates detailing conversations between myself or any other authorized individual and the board attorney. While I understand the intent of that request, I must also weigh the risks. Prior to that discussion, it came to our attention that screenshots of internal board emails regarding the Beijing contract have been shared with a third party. That information has since been used in a manner that could negatively impact the financial interests of our school district. In light of this, I believe it is the best interest of the district to maintain our current process. The board will continue to receive timely updates when there is complete and accurate information to share. Those updates will be provided either by email or in person, consistent with council's guidance and in the manner safest and most protective for the district. Our responsibility is to safeguard both the integrity of our governance and the financial health of our schools. I believe this course of action honors that responsibility. And I'll just close it again by noting that we will have a fuller discussion of this policy at our next meeting along with the sunscreen policy, as you mentioned, Dan. And I wanted to provide just some food for thought in advance of that committee of the whole conversation. Thank you. With regards to new business, our next meeting date is October, it says thirteenth, is it thirteenth or fifteenth? Thirteenth, October thirteenth. And that'll be a Cal meeting. Is there the state report? Go for it.
Right, so I know how many people are aware, but there is a state commission on the effects of social media usage in adolescents, and they recommended a bell-to-bell ban on cell phones. What I would like us to do as a board is to look at that report. I don't know if anything was sent to the school. Was anything, was that full report shared with the schools? It didn't come from the Department of Education. It looks like, from what I can see, it came from Rutgers.
I have not seen it.
Okay.
So I, I don't know if others have.
That's right. It wasn't from the State Department, but I, what I'd like us as a board is to look at our current policy, look at the handbook, and see how it is being implemented here. And look at that, the reporting from that report to see how we can shore up our policy. And I really would like it if there was a thoughtful, comprehensive discussion with the community at large. I think if this is something that we're going to look into, I'd like to hear from the staff, I'd like to hear from the parents, I'd like to hear from the students, anyone this may impact, and to come up with a thoughtful policy that would meet the needs of everybody involved.
So I see that we could probably add that to our committee of the whole agenda next, and maybe just have like that now, you know, we'll all be able to read the policy and then have an actual full discussion about it and then see, you know, what our thoughts are. All right. With regards to the policy check, ad hoc committee, one, I know, you know, Boaz, I would like for you to chair it. And are there two other members of the board that would like to be on this committee to just go through the policies? You know, anybody? No? All right. Don't we all just, you know, run, you know, do this? But this would help us like just close the loop on this last goal that we had from last year. So, so, you know, Liz and, and Karen, or, or, yeah. Yeah, Ed, actually, Ed, Ed, if you could do this one, Liz and Ed and, and Boaz, if you guys could work together on that, that would be great. Thank you. All right. So it'll be an ad hoc committee on the policy check. And Ed and Liz and Boaz will chair. Thank you. All right, so on to public comments, three of three. At eight twenty-three, please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Oh, what happened? I don't think, I don't, okay. Oh, yeah. That's, sorry. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Elise Meltzer, fifty-nine, Ebbington Terrace. I've never done this before, but I've been attending a lot of the board meetings recently, and I just feel that it's important for the residents to kind of share some of the concerns that, you know, I hear many families in the community talking about. And so I just, I kind of never knew where to start, so I just jot it down, like, some things. One of the biggest things that I've noticed is the math curriculum. Many students are struggling, they need tutors just to keep up. I know that we have the data that says that our math curriculum is working and that the student scores are up, but parents are spending lots and lots of money on private tutors. I am a previous math teacher, so I've been reached out by many parents for tutoring. And just some ideas is like earlier placement testing in fifth or sixth grade. So students aren't, are matched to the right level instead of being pushed into one accelerated track, and then they're all failing, and then they have to get tutors, and then their math confidence is just down. Let's build their math confidence up instead of bringing it down. And then instead, when they don't make that advanced track, let's rename the foundations class. Like, why does it have to be foundations? That just makes the kids like it. I feel like if there's like a stigma to it. It could just be math seven or math eight. I think people would be more receptive to that. One other big thing is the school resource officers. I know many other districts have school resource officers. I saw postings about trained security guards carrying guns, but we could just have a police officer. That it's their job to be in each building. If we just start with the middle, high school as the first place, that's what my district did. It improves safety and also serves as trusted mentors for the students. The students have a police officer in their building that they can go to, especially at the high school, middle school level that they trust. Another thing was the cell phone policy, which I was happy to see that it is on the new business, but more and more districts are moving towards more stricter policies. I know a good way to start would be by like surveying the community, the parents, the staff, the students. And then even having like a committee come together at each school with teachers, administrators, a parent, some students on the committee, and kind of hearing everybody's voice on like what they feel would be the appropriate extreme or leniency on the cell phone policy. I know everybody talks about the morale in the, you know, but we're just hoping that hopefully with some new changes that we'll be able to bring the morale back up in the district. And then for the AI, I feel like teachers could be training each other. Like, it doesn't have to be like paid professional development. Like, if teachers are using something, using some PD time for that. And that's it. But thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hi, folks. Scott Meltzer, fifty-nine, Ebbington. Regarding the comments on AI, I think that's, that's a, it's a very important step to take. I appreciate the comments. I'm not sure if it's been discussed before. I have not been at recent Board of Ed meetings. But in, 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 in business and industry, it is, it's consuming everyone. You know, it's really something... You know, it's really something that we need to get ahead of before it's too late. I could tell personally, for myself, being in tech and business, you're already probably far behind if you're not there. So getting curriculums going, thinking about this stuff, taking it from other districts that have already advanced in this, I think is, is widely important. I would encourage, if you can't leverage sort of the knowledge of the board or your teachers to, to reach out to the community. In Glen Rock, we have a huge talent pool of people in business and tech that are doing this today that can easily and quickly bring ideas to the table. And if that's something that can be formed as a, you know, public opinion, community service, bring best practices, ideas to the table so that you guys could, could then think about how to implement appropriately. I think that would be a big benefit. Also, you know, we're talking about like coding as, as a class, which is great, but if you think about it, coding is probably not going to be here in ten, fifteen years. So, or, or to some degree, right? So you have to think about, are we going to be coding for large, large language models and sort of take a different approach to it, right? So I think it, it's widely important, but if we don't act quickly, our kids are really going to be far behind because the industry is moving so fast. And I think just getting something in the curriculum, you know, today, more informational awareness, how to use it, controls, things to do and not to do, going back to some of the, the things that you had mentioned before, that, you know, misuse, et cetera. I know we do that for some of the checks around, you know, schoolwork and, and, and things of that nature that are inappropriate to take off of ChatGPT and other, other sites. But it's something that, that kids need to know, teachers need to know it. It can, it can create significant efficiencies across the board. And I think if we don't use it, we're going to be, as a school district, behind the eight ball, and, and ultimately, we'll be paying more and more costs to catch our kids up. And it can help with teachers and other things that are manually intensive. So appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Is it working?
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, Ginger Jano, still at one-thirty-five Delmar. So first of all, I want to thank you guys for all of the work you do because I don't know how you balance this with all of your other responsibilities and roles, because I'm not up there. And second of all, on that note, I do think, similar to what Scott said, utilizing the community in ways that you can in terms of these committees and things like that, this is like too much work. Like, all of these committees that you're doing individually, the amount of research that is required to do all of these things well, to do best practices for sexting, you know, or whatever in terms of that, to do best practices for AI, to really dig into the literature that's been available on all these things. I don't think, I mean, I'm sure you're all amazing, but like you don't have time to do all of these things as a group, I would assume. I work in medical education and I work in medicine, and I can tell you from my perspective as, like in academia, where we're studying education practices, there is like a wealth of information on AI and in education, which I'm sure you all know, like the literature is there. We don't have all the best practices yet, but that's what everybody's trying to figure out. And I think we want to do it quickly, but we also want to do it right, and that's like a very fine balance. And in order to gather the information in a, in a smart way, I think it's going to require some real like manpower. So I think that's, that's one thing. And I think the same thing goes for some of the other issues, like, you know, the mathematics curriculum, I think, is a significant issue. We all see it on Facebook, we all see it in our social media. A lot of us are paying for tutors. But I think, you know, that needs to be studied in sort of a more strategic fashion. Like, we can look at scores, but that's not really looking at the confounding variables that are underlying the differences amongst our students and who's requiring tutors and who's not. So I think, you know, I don't know how these things get done outside an academic setting, but if we can figure out a way to sort of do surveys in the community in a way where we can look at these kinds of things, like great, you know, percentage grade alterations, requiring tutoring, you know, things like that, hours and stuff like that, I think that would be a really valuable service to our community and really allow us to see where the deficits are because we can keep talking about it, but it's not changing. I also don't understand when people, I know you said we can email and things like that, like have conversations, because like I'm talking at you all and it's kind of awkward. And I think, I don't know, in terms of the Board of Ed having like, and again, this is like only my second Board of Ed meeting that I've come to ever, so I apologize for my ignorance, but like having some sort of a presence on social media where like, you know, questions can be answered and things like that. Because I also think people yell into a black box and they think nothing's being done, and we just don't have awareness.
No problem, thank you. I can actually speak a little bit to the social media aspect, and if Mark, you can kick in legally. We've, for years, I think I've been on the board now for over five years, and every year we talk about social media and what our social media policy is and whether we should respond to things as a board or not, or should we, like if we had a page, could we say things? Well, we would have to say things, but then we wouldn't be able to like limit comments, and then we couldn't individually comment on things because really as a board, we're only, it's so different from town council, like very, very different structure from town council. Like, we're, our, 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 our decisions and our, the things that we say are only valid as a, as a board. And even when I speak, I, I, the board empowers me as, as the president to be able to speak on their behalf. However, me speaking on their behalf is based on, on the knowledge of what the board wants. If I don't have the knowledge of what the board wants because we haven't met to have a discussion about these items, then I can't even really, you know, speak on them. So it, it is complicated in terms of doing that, and I'm not, it's not a no. It's just like a, we're constantly trying to figure out and see what other districts are doing and see if there's something that we're able to do where we're able to have like better conversations with the community. But consistently, even including our state association, doesn't really recommend just like a, like an open forum where we just sit here and like go back and forth. I've literally asked that very specific question to the state association within the year, and still the advice is that we don't do it in that manner. There are things that we do, though, like we're, you know, going forward, like having other retreats or things like that where we were able to build with the community on certain topics and then have like roundtables and things like that, and those kinds of formats, we might be able to do something like that again. But, you know, please, like, thank you for that question and any other ones that come up. You know, feel free to let us know if you thought about something different or, you know, like to leverage that experience that, that you just mentioned. Is there anything different that, yeah? Yeah, we do, yeah, we do have a social media policy. So we're, we're really, we really frown upon any board member specifically commenting on, on, on social media just because, one, even though our opinions are our own, because we are members of this community, but we also have knowledge of things that occur on the backend. So it's very hard for me to say that I have, you know, that I know something on the backend, but then I'm also acting without that knowledge. It's, it's, it's like, it doesn't really exist. So we, we typically don't respond to like Glen Rockers or Glen Rock, New Jersey, or Glen Rock NJ, or Glen Rock comma NJ, or, you know, like, dot, dot, dot. We don't really do that because it's really not, it, it's, we, we're not able to have like that back and forth and things like that. So just so you know, like, I, I know we say this often, but this is, since it came up, it's a good time. Yeah.
I just wanted to say that while we cannot respond, we definitely listen and we take everything into account.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we do read, we, we do read, absolutely. All right, so if there are no other additional, oh, okay.
Colleen Manley, Cindy Ridge Road. Okay, three things, and I always forget things. First, I just want to thank you very much for your comments and your responses. I have tremendous respect for everyone and particularly those taking a look at this. And as I've mentioned, I've been in a lot of negotiations. I certainly understand, like, when you go through that whole process and then someone comes back and says, yeah, but I don't like that part. I would point out that there have been two sidebars even in the last ten years specifically on these types of issues. And perhaps that's because having it at a time when you, like, it's just such a small little part of this huge contract. So maybe having a little time when you're not that, maybe that's a strategy. But anyway, I'm, I'm just very pleased to hear, even for a presentation, I think it's a great step forward, and I thank you. I also wanted to say I just am thrilled at the types of clubs that are being started. I think it shows tremendous diversity and really interesting perspectives for these kids, and I think that's great. If I'm understanding correctly, I think unfortunately when that comes, you can't necessarily pay the people because it's not in the contract, if I'm, so perhaps there's a couple of issues that could be in a sidebar. And then, and my final favorite topic is the supervisors. And just like what I heard is like, like, these are the things supervisors, like, they're our leaders, right? And they're our future, and they're like doing the path. And if there were more opportunities where the supervisor sort of presented, like, here's what we see, and here's where we're going, and this and that with the public, I think there'd be a lot of people who would be interested, as I've mentioned a few other times. So anyway, thank you and have a great night.
Thank you.
No, okay, hi, my name is Monica Eisenprzemudzuski, sixty-six Van Allen. This is the first time that I'm speaking, so please apologize, seems I'm a little nervous. But anyway, I just wanted to voice shortly my opinion about math that some of my friends spoke of here. I have a son who is junior, but when he was in middle school, he struggled with math big time. We spend money on tutoring. Now, of course, it's a little bit easier for him, but I agree that this is a problem, and hopefully we can look into it. And I have another question, where is the superintendent? Do we know why he's not present or because we're just
He can't be here for personal reasons.
Oh, okay, okay. That's it, thank you.
All right, seeing no additional members of the public for a comment, we'll close our third public comment session at eight-thirty-nine PM. Thank you to all of those who participated. And at this, after we adjourn the public session, we're actually going to go back into closed just only for attorney-client privilege and personnel items. No votes would be, no action would be taken at that time. And so if I can have a motion to adjourn the public session and go into closed at eight-forty, Mr. Corey, seconded by Mr. Hayward. All those in favor? Any opposed? None. All right, we're closed, we adjourned to eight-forty, thank you.